Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Newington Town Council Public Hearing Regarding Portion of Former Barber Road Sale. Susan, if you could start us off with a roll call, please?
Okay. Mayor, Council Braverman. Council Boudreco.
Here.
Council Camillo. Council Danny.
Here.
Council Mankie.
Here.
Council Miner.
Here.
Council Nagel.
Here.
Mayor Del Buno.
Here. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. So we will begin, we will open this up to the public to provide an opportunity for interested individuals to express their views regarding the proposed sale of a portion of the former Barber Road here in Newington. The councils discussed this a couple of times, so now it's just our chance to hear from the public on the sale. So I will go to our participants' window. Public comment is limited to four minutes. Anyone who is using the Zoom app can participate or show that they'd like to by raising their hand in the participants' window using that function. If you are calling into the meeting and not in the app, you can do star nine to do the raise hand function, and I will just check our window and see who we have in attendance. So I have NCTV, and I have one other attendee, and I don't have a raised hand yet, but we'll just give it some time.
I do know, Mayor, that Attorney Griffith actually indicated he was looking to speak as well. I haven't seen him come on the screen yet either.
Okay. Thank you for that. So I know it's a little weird having kind of quiet time, but we just have to give it a few minutes just to see if anybody wants to join us. No one so far? I appreciate everybody just hanging in with us, giving the public a chance if they'd like to join us. James, I still don't see the attorney on. Do you?
No, I'm not showing him either.
Okay.
I have a third coming on. Nope. That's Andrew.
Thank you for pulling him over. So again, just for the public's sake, if anybody's tuned in a few minutes late, this is a public hearing regarding the sale of the former portion of, a portion of the former Barber Road. This is the public's chance to call in and reach us to discuss the matter. If you're joining us via Zoom in the app, you can use the raise hand function in the participant window, and if you are calling in through Zoom, then you can do star nine on your keypad, and that will let us know that your hand is raised and you'd like to be recognized. Well, I don't see anyone raising their hand or joining us at this point. So... This item will be addressed on the next, in our next meeting at 7:00 also.
It just showed up.
Okay.
We'll give him just a moment.
So anybody from the public who is attending, you can use the raise hand function in your Zoom app and let us know that you'd like to participate in this public hearing, and then you will be addressed by the council. Okay. Attorney Griffith, I believe you're there. If you could just unmute your mic and state your name and address for the record. Attorney Griffith, go ahead.
He's definitely unmuted.
Attorney Griffith, are you there? We're not able to hear you right now. James, do you have any suggestions? He's unmuted, and he is allowed to talk right now, enabled.
If he'd like to call into my office at 860-665-8550, I can put him on through my microphone.
Attorney Griffith, I see your hand up, but I am unable to hear you. I don't know if you heard that. If you'd like to call Mr. Kropinski's office, 860-665-8550, he can help you participate in the meeting through the phone.
Attorney Griffith?
Hello?
Go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Mr. McCann.
Thank you. Good evening. I represent a Walk-In Medical Center, LLC. My client has obtained the required approvals from the town council, from the town and town council to develop the town-owned parcel. My client is ready, willing, and able to close on this purchase of the land and urge the town council to act so we may complete this transaction. Thank you for your prompt attention to this matter. I have no further remarks at this time.
Thank you, Attorney Griffith. I appreciate your flexibility with calling in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, folks. So I just noticed another member of the public popped into the meeting. We'll just give it a minute. Any, any other members of the public that would like to participate in this public hearing regarding the sale of the former Barber Road property, you may raise your hands. We'll give it a few seconds, and if not, we're going to close this hearing.
We have about 20 seconds before the next meeting starts.
Okay. So I don't see any other hands raised, so I will close this public hearing. James, do we need a motion to close?
No, you can just close the public hearing.
Okay. The public hearing stands closed at 6:59. And we will move into our regular meeting in just a moment.
You're all set, Mayor.
Thank you. Even though I was on mute, you knew exactly what I was asking. All right. I'd like to call the Newington Town Council Regular Meeting of September 8th to order at 7:01 PM. If you could all rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And if we could start with roll call, please?
Council Anist. Here. Braverman. Boudreco.
Here.
Council Camillo.
Here.
Council Danny.
Here.
Council Mankie.
Here.
Council Miner.
Here.
Council. Council Nagel.
Here.
Mayor Del Buno.
Here.
Okay. Council Braverman's not answering.
She's not on the meeting as of yet. She was going to be a little late.
Okay, thank you. All right. We will move on now to approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Council Mankie, seconded by Council Anist. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Council Braverman absent. We will move on now to Proclamations and Awards. James, do we have anyone in attendance for this one?
No. Mr. Schroeder did receive an invitation. He has not shown up on the participants' panel yet.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't see it either.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So I will go ahead and read the proclamation into the record. "We are honoring Chief Schroeder this evening from our fire department, who has retired, and so I'll go ahead and read this in." Proclamation. "Whereas Chris R. Schroeder joined the fire department as a firefighter April 1st, 1974, and whereas Chris Schroeder served as deputy chief from 1991 through 2005, and whereas Chris Schroeder was appointed to fire chief in 2005, his official retirement date was August 21st, 2020, and whereas Chief Schroeder served a total of 46.5 years in the fire department, and whereas Chief Schroeder served as fire marshal from 1995 until his retirement on December 31st, 2019. Whereas Chief Schroeder also served as emergency management director from December 30th, 1990 through August 21st, 2020, originally appointed by Mr. Keith Chapman, and now therefore be it resolved that the Newington Town Council hereby recognizes and extends its sincere appreciation to Fire Chief Schroeder for his professional service and dedication to the town and wishes him the best in his retirement. Dated in Newington, Connecticut, this 8th day of September, 2020, signed Beth Del Buno, Mayor." All right. I would like to have someone move that we accept the proclamation.
I would move, reset the proclamation.
Thank you, Council Mankie. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Nagel, and now we'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Boudreco.
Um, yes. I just would publicly like to thank Chief Schroeder for his service to the town and to the fire department. For over 46 years, he served the fire department as a leader in their ranks, but at the same time, he was serving the community by his involvement with the fire department, by his, his dedication, his service, and his pride. And both groups, the community and the fire department benefited greatly by his involvement and his commitment, so I would just like to thank him for all he's done for Newington.
Well said. Thank you. Other council comment? Council Mankie.
Yes, I would like to also thank him for his leadership over these 46.5 years. His knowledge, he is knowledgeable of fire equipment, fire procedures, and certainly that it's gone on to make his staff and his fire department, our fire department, much, much more knowledgeable, but also for his caring. He's, for the last 46.5 years, he's cared about this town enough to, to go out on, on cold winter nights and on early, early mornings to, and be away from his family, to answer fire calls, and to, to make our, our volunteer firemen one of the best in the, in the state. And I appreciate his efforts, and I wish him luck in his retirement. I hope he has a, be able to spend some time with his grandkids and, and doing the stuff for his family that he's missed over these 46.5 years because he's been serving us.
Thank you, Council Mankie. Council Miner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to thank Chief Schroeder for all of his time and service in the department. I've had the privilege of working with him for over 12 and a half years, and the true inspiration to me is his desire of keeping the history alive, and that is something that I hope to see continue in the future, that our history does not get forgotten, and I'm sure with Chief Schroeder, still being involved with the old firehouse, that that won't happen. And finally, I'd like to extend my best wishes to him in his retirement, and thank his wife and his girls for their willingness to share him with the town folk. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Miner. Council Nagel.
I'd like to also extend my best wishes to Chief Schroeder. I've known him for the past 14, 15 years, and in his capacity and working with the fire department, he has always been helpful to me and to others, and I've seen him work not only with the public, but also with all those of the very stiff ranks within the fire department in a very courteous and effective manner. He will be missed, and I sincerely hope that he enjoys his retirement and hope he will always remember that we appreciate all the time, commitment, and hard work that he put in over the many years that he has served.
Thank you, Council Miner. Further council comments? All right. I would just like to extend my gratitude to Chief Schroeder. In the years that I've known him, probably about 17 now, um, he has always really, truly been the utmost professional in all of my dealings with him. He has served this town endlessly for 46 and a half years, and I know how much time and energy that takes, and it's just, I think of the 17, 18 years that I've been doing this, and to think of 46 years, wow, that's pretty incredible. And like you mentioned, Council Mankie, just going out at a, you know, constantly, no matter what the weather, no matter what the time, no matter what you have on board for your family and making those sacrifices, and for that long amount of time, I just, I can't say enough how grateful I am for his service to this town, and I wish him all the best in the, in the years to come. I know he's looking forward to spending some time with the grandkids and the family, and so Chief Schroeder, I wish you all the best, and thank you so very much. Okay. We actually have another proclamation this evening. And I'm looking just in our participants' window before I begin that one.
Just need to finish the vote on the current one, or if you can open it up to the public as well, if they'd like to comment.
Thank you, James. All right. So let's go ahead and do the roll call vote, and then we'll open it up for the public to comment on that one.
Council Anist.
Yes.
Council Braverman. Council Boudreco.
Yes.
Council Camillo.
Yes.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council Mankie.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Council Nagel.
Yes.
Mayor Del Buno.
Yes.
Eight zero.
Okay, congratulations, Chief. I'll open it up to the public if any member of the public would like to speak on his proclamation. Ms. Mazacoli, you can go ahead.
Hi. I would like, oh, Sue Mazacoli, 149, Harris Drive, Newington, Connecticut. Also would like to thank Chief Schroeder for all of his years of service, and thank his family members too. I only needed a fire department to come to my house one time. We had a kitchen fire. It was a toaster oven that caught on fire while I was at work, and my son was home alone, and it was very frightening to get that call from my son saying, "Ma, the kitchen's on fire," and I said, "Get out of the house, call 911." And of course, they got there before I got there, and with my heart beating and crying and all worried, all the way home, I was quite pleased once I got there to see everything was safe, that my son was alive, that there was nothing issues other than maybe repainting a cabinet, but at the same time, the scariest, scariest feeling ever. And I just wanted to thank so much the fire department, and in doing that, of course, thank their leader, Chief Schroeder. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mazacoli. All right. I'm just looking to see if any other members of the public have their hands up, and I do not see anyone. So we will move on to our next proclamation.
Just the vote.
We did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It passed eight zero with Council Braverman absent.
My apologies.
That's okay. You're keeping me on my toes. I had to think about it. All right. So we are moving on to proclamation for Constitution Week. All right. So I was contacted and asked to consider this proclamation, and I thought it was a, we had done it years ago. It looks like we haven't done it in a few years, so I was very pleased to bring this back in honor of Constitution Week.
Miss Wood is on the call with you as well.
Wonderful. So with us tonight, we have our chapter regent, Mary Wood, and welcome, Ms. Wood.
Thank you.
And I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and read this into the record, and then we'll go through our process, and we'll give you a chance to speak in just a few, okay? Proclamation, Constitution Week. "Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Beth Del Buno, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Newington, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the town to be affixed this 8th day of September of the year of our Lord, 2020. Signed, Mayor Beth Del Buno." Okay. I would go ahead and entertain a motion to accept the resolution.
So moved.
So moved by Council Anna, seconded by...
Second.
Is that Council Camillo?
Yes.
Okay. Seconded by Council Camillo. I'll open it for discussion. I'd like to ask Ms. Wood if she has something to offer.
Yes, I do have something to author, offer, Madam Mayor. I don't know if the counselors are aware that two delegates from Connecticut, Oliver Ellsworth and Roger Sherman, were instrumental in creating what is, what was known as the Connecticut Compromise, which gives us our two houses in Congress of the legislative branch, which would be the House of Representatives, which is based on population, and the Senate, where two members of each state serve. Was something, there was a dispute as to how the gentlemen wanted their states represented, and because, of course, there were some states that were larger than others, and that was the compromise that was created, and it was offered by Roger Sherman and Oliver Ellsworth. And Roger Sherman, just a bit of trivia, is the only person in the history of the United States to sign the four primary documents of the United States, which were the four that brought this country into existence. And those are my bits of trivia.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And on behalf of the Sarah Whitman chapter, National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution, and the Connecticut Society of Daughters of the American Revolution, I appreciate you issuing this proclamation for our chapter for Constitution Week.
It's our pleasure. Thank you for bringing it to our attention and reminding us all of it.
Oh, you're very welcome.
I'm going to open it up for council comment. Any councilor like to comment? Council Anist.
Thank you. Um, I was honored to be on the 200th Anniversary Committee Celebration of the Constitution, and I just want everybody to know that is why Constitution Square is named Constitution Square. We dedicated that in honor of the 200th anniversary of the Constitution. So that's a little bit of trivia too.
Thank you, Council Anist. Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Wood, for joining us, and, and again, thank you for reminding us of our, the anniversary of this and, and bringing it to our attentions that we were able to honor it this evening. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Take care. We need to go ahead and do a formal vote on this, so if we could do a roll call, please?
Council Anist.
Yes.
Council Braverman. Council Boudreco.
Yes.
Council Camillo.
Yes.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council Mankie.
Yes.
Council Miner.
Yes.
Council Nagel.
Yes.
Mayor Del Buno.
Yes.
Eight zero.
Thank you. Motion passes eight zero with Council Braverman absent. And I will just open it up to the members of the public if anybody would like to comment on this proclamation, now that we've gone ahead and passed it. Ms. Mazacoli. Go right ahead.
Sue Mazacoli, 149, Harris Drive, Newington. I was hoping Mary Woods would still be on. I, when I was growing up and President Kennedy was our president, I was the understanding back then that he was going to make September 17th Constitution Day, make it a national holiday. And unfortunately, he was assassinated before that happened. I don't know if it's true, but as a child who wanted September 17th off, I was really hoping that that had happened. It just so happens to be my birthday. So happy Constitution Week.
Thank you, Ms. Mazacoli. Okay. I don't see any other members of the public, so we are all set. Thank you again, Ms. Wood. All right. We are on to the next item agenda, which is public participation on any matter. Any member of the public may raise their hand to let us know they'd like to be recognized by, in the Zoom function, in the participants' window, using the raise hand function. Any member of the public may raise their hand to let us know they'd like to be recognized by, in the Zoom function in the participants' window using the raise hand function. Or if you're calling into the meeting, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. We'll just give it a moment for people to raise hands if they would like to. All right, we have someone, Ms. Foley. You may go ahead and state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. Patty Foley, 51 Crown Ridge. I come to you this evening as the Chair of the Environmental Quality Commission and the Sustainable Team for Newington. The Town Council on December 10th, 2019, you might remember, made a resolution appointing the EQC as a sustainable team for Newington. The EQC was in transition and had their first meeting on February 13. According to the resolution, we are to give this body a quarterly report, so I apologize for our tardiness. We had four programs scheduled for COVID, just before the COVID shutdown was watered. They were all centered around the 50th anniversary of Earth Day on April 22nd. There was a seminar planned with the coordination of DEEP, the Library and the Sanitation Department. We had a shredding day for senior, for citizens in order to reduce garbage, an annual litter pickup, and a student Earth Day poster contest. The last two events had been staples of this commission for a long time. All but one were canceled. We were able to turn around the student Earth Day poster contest into an online event. While participation was not at the same level of the past years, we were able to embrace new technology and hold the contest. Parents submitted their child's work electronically, and we posted them to a contest gallery. Our esteemed judges were then able to take the first, second, and third place winners. We also took this step, we also took a step further and made a video acknowledging the students' work, their school, and teachers, and it was shown on MCTV. Three commissioners have attended the Equity Seminar offered by Sustainable Connecticut. It was truly enlightening as to how to embrace today's world. This may qualify depending on the days of sessions. As of today, there were 110 of 169 municipalities registered for Sustainable Connecticut. Of the 110, 48 have been certified either at a bronze level of 200 points or silver level at 400. There are nine action categories, from thriving local communities, vibrant and creative cultural ecosystems, to strategic and inclusive public services, to name three out of nine steps. The certification is an inclusive process, not with the municipality and the citizens of Newington. On the 20th, the EQC page was updated with the names of the new commissioners. Unfortunately, and it's one of my requests at the end of this report, there's no way to contact the commission, except to the two Town Council liaisons. At the EQC meeting in July, we voted to have our submission date for the sustainability approval for August 2021. When the important items, one of the important items to receive points to qualify is that much of the work must be completed within one year of submission. Therefore, the August 21st submission qualifying activities occur starting this past July and go through August 1st of next year. And certain past actions that we have that are outside of this timeframe may also qualify for recognition. Currently, there is a monthly litter pickup that's been organized by a citizen. She had 20 people show up a couple weeks ago, and they're going to have another event later this month. We are coordinating with a member of the Conservation Commission on an invasive plant education while at inception. While it's at inception, we'll be meeting with them next week in order to talk about what they have to do in order to make their work also count count for points. I have two requests, and I would hope that maybe just bring me here and then let me know where to really send it. On our commissions page, is there a way that, one, to communicate with the commission, because there's no way otherwise for people to get to us? Also, is to update the page there and let people know that the commission has been charged with Newington's Sustainable Team, because they can't find it anywhere else. And on the second one, on the town website, it would be a great place to have a space, a page, a simple page that we can start linking our, or have links put on there to work that is now completed we're going to receive point for, and for places that are throughout the website. It's hard to find. Anyway, thank you for your time. I look forward to giving your next, my next report on time in December.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Foley. And Ms. Foley, I would suggest that those couple of requests that you had, if you could put those in writing either to myself or the town manager, if you send it to me, I'll forward it to him, honestly. And then he could decide who would be best served to help you and put you in touch with them, okay? I don't see any other members of the public with their hands raised. So we will move on. No one had any letters from the public, did they, councilors? Okay. All right, so we will move on to council, remarks by councilors on public participation. Any council remarks? Council Nagel?
You're muted, Council Nagel.
Sorry. I'd like to thank Patty Foley for giving that detailed report, giving information about the great many things that has been going on with the commission. I'd like to suggest that we make her update the next one that, from what I gathered, from what she said, it's in December, part of either, I would assume, old business as opposed to public participation, which will give her more time to explain what she needs to and not be under the constraints of the time limits that there are for public participation. Once again, thank you, Patty. Great job, and I hope we'll consider that in December so she can formally present it in that format.
It's a great idea, Council Nagel, thank you. And that would allow for more of a dialogue as well. Under public participation, we don't have dialogue, so having it as an agenda item would be an improvement for sure. I don't see any other council hands up. So we will move on. The next item on our agenda will move into old business, and the first item would be health update for COVID-19. Mr. Chapman, are you gonna start us off, or?
I'll start you off, and then the Director of Public Health will join me. Just to update everyone, we did have a minor scare in the town hall last week where an individual found that they were positive while they were visiting the town hall and exposed a couple of our employees, including myself. So we had our first experience on standing at home and being tested and waiting for the results, which I can attest to you that it's not pleasant, even though we tested negative, everyone was negative. It, it takes a lot out of you worrying about whether you are testing positive, so we know how this happened, and we certainly are not going to get ourselves in that situation again. But I do have Charlie Brown with me tonight at our request to join the council. I know several councilors have questions, and he's available to answer those at this time if anybody would like to ask.
Okay, welcome, Charles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Do you have anything you'd like to share? And then we can open it for comment, or?
Sure, I'll just give a quick update. Currently, as of September 7th, the total cases for Newington of COVID-19 was 445. Total number of deaths is at 51. We have noticed here recently a slight uptick in the number of cases that have been coming off. I think we're starting to come off of the lull that we had seen. And as people start to interact a little bit more, we have started to see our cases start to inch upward, more cases each week. So we're keeping an eye on that as far as that's concerned. We're not anything to be majorly concerned with right now. Overall, Connecticut is still at about a 1% transmission rate. It's just something for us to be cognizant of.
Okay. Thank you. I'll open it up for Council Connaught, Council Minor. Chris, you're muted. Council Minor, are you there? I'm gonna move on to Deputy Mayor Butdraco, and then we'll go back to Council Minor. Maybe it's a glitch.
Yeah, I was just wondering, Keith or Charles, I know there also was a case at the high school, I believe, of a student or staff member, I'm not sure. Can you comment on, on the the implications of that and how that was handled and?
Well, I can't comment on the individual case itself, but what I can say is that the protocols and the procedures that were put into place for the reopening of the schools really were successful in this instance. I really have to give a lot of credit to Nurse Supervisor Mercy Heatherington for doing an outstanding job of contact tracing when she was notified of a confirmed case within the school. They were able to really track down who had contact with the, with the confirmed case and really identify whether that was significant contact and would require someone to be quarantined, or if it was just incidental contact. The thing that I think was majorly successful in this process was the fact that, you know, the wearing of masks, the social distancing within the school setting really allowed us to be able to really just deal with those people who were mostly affected and not have to do, you know, drastic measures like shutting down a school or something like that, just because we had a positive case. So it really was, I think, a very big success story here. The communication between the school district, the medical advisor, and us at the health district, I think, couldn't have been much better. And, and really, overall, I think it showed really how our protocols can work moving forward.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilor Mankie?
Mr. Brown, maybe you could explain the difference between a significant and an incidental contact?
Absolutely. So a significant contact is when you're within six feet of somebody who is a confirmed case for more than 10 or 15 minutes. So that would be a confirmed contact. And incidental contact would be less, like if you pass somebody in the hall.
In the hall, okay.
Yeah, as far as that's concerned. So the only ones that we're concerned about are those, you know, confirmed contacts. And we actually, you know, follow up with them. We would place those folks in quarantine. And there's a little bit of difference, because the people that are confirmed cases, they have a different time period for which they need to be isolated. Confirmed cases isolate for 10 days. As long as their symptoms are improving after that 10 days, and they don't have a fever, they can come out of isolation. For people who were just in contact with a confirmed case, they're under quarantine, and that's for 14 days. And that 14-day time period is set so that it allows for the incubation of the virus over that 14-day period. So if they meet 14 days and they haven't had any symptoms, then they can come out of quarantine at that point. Does that help?
Yeah. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Minor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Charles, I appreciate you taking the time to join us tonight. The question I've got for you is, is there any way to basically, what are the mitigation efforts that we can offer to try to allow some more in-person activities? The question I'm asking is more specific to Parks and Rec is now beginning to offer some more programming inside. There's been a number of people that have asked me, you know, are we going to be back in the library anytime soon? I know we're not going to be able to sit down and read a book inside, but, you know, can we be, you know, checking out a book and browsing to pick out books? And the senior center with activities, my concern is with the isolation of a lot of people that this is really wreaking havoc on their mental state. And I'm just questioning whether, we're never going to be able to completely mitigate everything. I think we can agree with that. And with a positivity rate that's, I believe, less than half a percent is what the press conference was today from Governor Lamont, and hospitalizations being at 50 statewide. I know your instinct is to say we really need to stay put until vaccines are in place or treatments are in place. And I just don't know really when that opportunity will come. I just wondered if you could comment on some of that, Charles?
Yeah, and, and you're right. I mean, I think that absolutely without a vaccine or a treatment, that we have to look at every activity of the personal interaction very closely, because it, it does carry an inherent risk. As, as Mr. Chapman started off this particular segment with, you know, the in-person meeting and the fact that you have somebody that tested positive and that there was exposures that resulted from that, I think is, is a good case in point. You know, when we look at each individual interaction, we have to look at the risk and the benefit of that. And ultimately, I think, you know, the question that, that we should do is the same thing that we've done from the beginning, which is, is there a way to safely do this activity and allow it to continue? And I know that, you know, there's a lot of people that want to just, you know, throw caution to the wind, get back to normal, and just, you know, the, with the case rate being as low as it is. And I'll, I'll turn it back, you know, around and say, the only reason that the case rate is as low as, is as low as it is is because of the precautions that we've taken. You know, at this point, you know, if there is a way to be able to do something that we don't have to risk those personal interactions and can still fulfill the mission, then that's the safest option. And that's the way that we should be looking at this at this point. You know, things like the schools and the libraries, we've been in conversations with both the library and the senior center, excuse me, you know, to talk about how we can safely reopen portions and programs to be able to provide those opportunities for people to browse for a book safely. You know, and how we, what protocols we have to put in place to be able to allow that to happen. I think that it is very challenging, and, and, you know, as we come in close contact with each other to really keep this virus from spreading. And, you know, as people realize that the asymptomatic, the spreading of the disease without any symptoms whatsoever is what causes me, and I think most public health professionals, to be very, very cautious about this, because, you know, people don't have those direct symptoms that, that are warning sign to folks to say, hey, you know, I don't need to continue with a close interaction, or, you know, oh, it's, or to be a little bit, I won't say lackadaisical, but a little bit less cautious than what they need to be. And, you know, that's what's really going to make this disease spread. As I've said many times before, this virus is very opportunistic. And if you give it an opportunity to spread, it will do so. And we're starting to see that spread as we're starting to interact more, both in colleges, in school settings as well. We're starting to see that type of transmission. So, I mean, I, I will say that we are working to try to open up, you know, some other opportunities to be able to utilize facilities. And we're happy to work with each one of the programs to be able to provide guidance on how to do that safely. And I think that they are looking at that and providing more programs here very soon.
Okay, thanks. Just one quick follow-up to that, Charles, is on the positivity rate that we reference as a metric, is that based on population, or is that based on tests given?
It's, it depends upon which metric you're talking about, because there's a lot of different metrics that are out there, and the one that the governor uses, for example, And the one that the governor uses, for example, I believe is based upon population. The one that's, the schools are using is based on a confirmed test date. So there's a little bit of difference in how they actually measure those particular rates. So it would really depend upon the rate that you're talking about. Without having it in front of me, unfortunately, I can't answer that directly. Okay?
Okay. Just because the reason I'm asking this is testing positive or a suspected positive, you're theoretically going to go for a 24-hour, go for a immediate test. If that comes back positive, you'll be advised to go to a, you know, 24-hour, 48-hour test. And then you're told that you should follow up in another 14 days. So my point is, one individual could theoretically be testing three times and I'm just wondering if that's not skewed in data somewhere?
No, 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 no. Because each one of those tests gets tied to an individual ID, you know, ID number within the state surveillance system and they take great pains to deduplicate that to make sure that, you know, the number of cases that you actually see don't equal, you know. So if somebody has multiple tests, it's not going to be multiplied over that. So, yeah, I mean, we can actually look, and I can look at this really quickly just to let you know, to give you an example, or maybe I can't, my computer's frozen. But there's many more tests than there are people right now, even within Newington, that have actually been tested. Probably close to almost, you know, twice as many, not quite twice, but close.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, councillor Anist.
Thank you. Thanks, Charles, for jumping on tonight with such short notice. When you talk about in contact for 14 days, incubation of the virus and to stay quarantined, you're even suggesting that if you've been tested negative?
Yes, because even though you test negative, a negative test is only a snapshot in time. So, for example, if I had somebody who was in contact with a confirmed case and they rushed right out the next day and they got tested, they may not have a high enough viral load within their body, even though they may have been infected, to actually trigger a positive test. So, you know, what they recommend is regardless of testing, that you spend the 14 days in quarantine to give your body the time to be able to either incubate that virus or not. After that 14 days, if you haven't developed symptoms, then you're in the clear.
That's what I thought. I think a lot of people think, once they get tested, they're good and they can go about their business back to normal. So I'm glad you clarified that. My other thing is, is that, do you have, my internet connection's getting a little funky here. Do you have what the other towns are doing in your health district for meetings, the library, their parks and rec, their park activities?
Yeah, it's pretty consistent among most of the towns. I mean, some towns have allowed some appointments for their particular departments. I believe all of them are still meeting remotely. I don't believe any of them are meeting at this time in person. You know, so everybody's been pretty consistent. And really, the wonderful thing for us at the health district is that we've been in discussion with, for example, you know, all of our libraries together so that we can talk with them, address their individual concerns, but also talk with them as a group so that they can learn from each other as they go through this and support each other as well. So that has been a really big success and it's allowed us to be able to really help each one of the towns, you know, move forward in a very consistent manner among our district.
Yeah, because I've noticed, I get updates on the town halls and I've noticed that more and more are being open to the public without an appointment, social distancing, masks. So I was just curious what, you know, our five towns, because I know some of the towns have opened up. Would it be possible to get like a survey done of what each of the towns are doing?
Yeah, we could ask what the towns or we could compile that information and I could get that to Keith Chapman.
Yeah, I would appreciate that because I do know some of the towns are holding live. You know, the board members or council members are meeting live and it's being broadcast on their local access or whatever. But they're in person. I'm just curious what the other towns.
Yeah, I'll do that research for you. I'll find out what is going on. I would just, you know, once again, I think that unless there's a really compelling reason to be able to meet in person, you know, the safest way to be able to do public meetings really at this point is virtual. And, you know, I would even go to the point that it's the responsible way to actually conduct meetings at this time without having a vaccine or a treatment available, that this is the responsible option.
Okay, I do, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other council question or comment? Councillor Nagel.
I just wanted to add from having gone to liaison meetings both with the library and also the senior disabled center that they are actively trying to figure out what they can do to serve the public, not only remotely and virtually in many different ways, but also considering what can be done to, once again, in some fashion, not in a fashion that they know from beforehand, in terms of using the facilities in a somewhat direct manner, but in, obviously, in no way what can be done now. And also, we have to consider the kind of materials that are needed, glass petitions and more so that is needed in both circumstances. Since in the senior center, you have a more vulnerable population merely by age, from what we've been told by health officials in terms of how this virus affects our older people, including myself supposedly, and also the library because of the high density of contact and the vast amount of print materials that are there. But I know firsthand that they are diligently worrying and trying to figure out how they can conserve the community and have been doing so in a very effective way with what new ways they've been having, but also trying to see slowly but surely how they can open up without putting our population in any harm's way.
Mr. Chapman, did you have something to add?
Yes. Charlie, just a question now to make it clear in my mind. Six of our either employees or volunteers or elected officials were at a meeting last Tuesday evening. One of the six or seven people there notified us on Wednesday morning that they tested positive. All of the individuals that were in the meeting have gone on to test. I myself was tested on, I believe it was Friday. I got the results back today that I'm negative. Others have gone for the rapid test and had negative results. Others have done both and they're still, in some cases, waiting for the final or have received the final negative. All of us have tested negative. Are you saying that all of us should remain isolated for the full 14 days?
Once again, it's the question of proximity and the mitigation efforts that you had in place to the person who was confirmed as a case. So if you were within six feet of that individual for 10 to 15 minutes, regardless of whether you were wearing a mask, you should quarantine for 14 days. And even if you did test negative, the 14 days is the recommendation. So if people were wearing masks and were beyond that six feet and distance, then they would not need to quarantine.
Okay. All right, that's good to know. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other council question or comment on this? All right, seeing none, I think we're all set. Thank you again, Charles.
You're very welcome. And anytime y'all need me, I'm here when you call.
We greatly appreciate it. Take care.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right, folks, we will move on now to the next item, which is town hall project update. Mr. Chapman?
Yes, the town hall continues to be finished off. The majority of the main building is now complete with some minor details left to be completed. The remaining major work still exists within the gymnasium area. From what I understand, bleachers have been delivered today and installation will begin. We did get a report from the state fire marshal's office that the entire bleacher system can never not be used simultaneously due to egress restrictions. So therefore, at no time at this point can the entire bleacher system be utilized. Depending on what sporting event goes on, there's a system that's been developed that would allow a majority of the bleachers to be used depending on what type of activities going on. However, the full use of the bleachers, we'll say for a concert or for some type of theater production or whatever, would not be allowed. And the problem was just recognized recently. I requested through the fire marshal's office that the state fire marshal come in, take a look around. They've given their written report. I've also requested that the state building official come in and look at the situation because they have a different set of standards that they're working with. And I also have requested that our insurance agency, KERMA, come in and look at the situation, both for the bleachers and for the exits out of the building. I'm very concerned as a public safety director that this facility has a potential that is very negative. And I want to make sure that whatever is done, we protect those that enter that building and have an enjoyable evening if they're there to watch a sporting events or whatever. So that report will be compiled as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. Council question or comment? Councillor Menke.
Yeah, Mr. Chapman, I understand there was, last time we visited the town hall, there was, on the council room, there were still boxes of files to be stored. Are those still in the council room?
Yes, they are. There's still, the last time I was down in the basement, there's still water problems down in the basement. Now, I don't know if they've been resolved because I've been out for a couple of days. But all of the boxes in the council chambers will be either put into the vault in the town clerk's office or located down in the basement once we're assured that it is dry and remains dry.
Is it still wet from the flood months ago?
No, I don't know. I was down there, I believe, last Monday and found water, actually water that's not going to the sump hole, which is the problem as well, over where the furnace, or not furnace, but the piping is located that circulates through the building for the hot water and so forth. So I don't know if it's an internal pipe leak or whether it's an external problem coming in. But I haven't talked to Paul today to see if that was resolved. But we don't want to put material down in that area if we don't have the water problems completely fixed.
Right, okay. So you're working on that issue then? I take it?
Yes.
Okay.
Councillor Minor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just real quick, Keith, if you could just verify that the construction for the gymnasium meets current building codes, correct?
The gymnasium itself meets fire codes, except that the bleachers either have to be redesigned or there has to be some type of a management plan that will exist forever whenever that gymnasium is used and the bleachers are used. You know, the state fire marshal indicated that either a redesign must take place or the plan must be in place. And it's not going to be easy to manage that in all situations. So again, I don't want to have a potential problem there. So I'm looking for resolution before we open up the gymnasium.
Okay, just one quick follow-up. If there were to be a concert or a lecture or something to that event, the floor would also be utilized to a certain degree, it was my understanding. Am I correct in that or standing?
Again, because of my newness to the town, I can't answer that for sure. But I would assume that there was a vision that if we had, we'll say, a theater production or a concert, that all of the bleachers would be utilized and possibly floor seating as well. But I can't say for sure, but I would assume that to be the case, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councillor Donahue, did you take your hand down on purpose?
I did. Okay. Yeah, I'm very disappointed to hear about the bleachers. I remember discussing that at committee level long ago, the number of seats that would be provided by the bump out and by the bleachers. And I don't ever recall hearing that there would have to be a restriction on how many bleachers were open. In fact, we talked about the overall number being about 1,100 seating, from what I remember, and talking about the ability to park that many. And, you know, there were concerns raised at that point, but nothing that indicated that the bleachers would not all be able to be fully opened from my recollection. So that's really disappointing to hear that that's an issue now. Let's see, councillor Nagel.
I assume that the building has already been given an official seating capacity. Are there definite numbers in terms of numbers of people that could be used? Or are there numbers of how many seats could be put on the floor? Are there defined numbers? And it would be interesting to know how those numbers specifically have to be limited if we have to live with the recent information we've been given about the section of the bleachers that can't be used for various events. Does anyone, Keith, or does anyone have an answer to that?
The only thing I can say, Dave, is that this issue with the bleachers came up during a discussion and a presentation with the state fire marshal when he was visiting the site. There was a design drawing of the bleachers being fully extended and with a note that had not been seen, I guess, by other people before, that at no time could all of the banks, the bleachers, be utilized simultaneously because of egress restrictions. That was never brought to my attention until about a month ago when we met with the state. So again, there's a lack of understanding and communication dealing with this whole issue. And I don't claim to know what happened. All I know is that as the public safety director, I need to make sure that it's safe moving forward.
I would. At some time in the future, I'm sure you would also want to know some exact figures realistically whenever the gymnasium can be open for whatever use. That's just an additional comment, not an additional question, Keith. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Minor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just Dave, the largest number capacity as it's currently configured now, meeting code, I believe, is just under 1,000 seats. And what that would be, would be premium seating or for a premier event, meaning one large court. Or if you were to go to a lecture or concert type of venue, then you could go to additional seating on the floor, which I believe is seven square feet per person is the way to calculate the occupancy. So if that helps you, Manny.
At some point in the future, I'd like to know definitely. At some point in the future, I'd like to know definite figures for when this opens. I think we all, including the Fire Department, the Town Manager, and the community, would like to know what the definite numbers are in the future. And from what I understand, that can't be answered at this moment.
Yeah, there, when the final certificate of occupancy is issued, an occupancy load will be issued for the space. That's the same as it is for any, you know, commercial space like that.
Okay, Counselor Mankey?
I did drive by a couple of times now, and I do notice that the roof to the gym is fairly accessible from the ground level. Do we have any plans to, to try to fix that so you can't just sort of step onto the roof of the gym?
Yes, there are plans, from what I understand. I haven't seen them myself, but there are some type of spike system or whatever you want to call it, that will be inserted into the wall of that portion of the gymnasium entrance, we'll say, that will prevent anyone from being able to climb from the landing where the stairs come up and get onto the roof of the, it would be the multipurpose room, actually.
Right, okay. But it, but it will be, I mean, I don't want to string barbed wire on top of the roof. That's not going to look very good for a town.
I don't think that's what's being designed. I think it's
Not, right.
Yeah, I haven't seen exactly what is being proposed, but that is a problem because if someone were to get up on the roof, they could fall off or they could do a lot of damage. So that is also a safety issue that I'm concerned about, as well as the stairway still.
Well, and certainly I'm not as knowledgeable about building as maybe Counselor Minor is, but didn't anybody see that at a time? That seems like like a no-brainer, that you could just step up and you're onto the roof. And I would think that would be a
I think I think what took place because of changes that were made through the process over the last year or so was that the original design had the exit way in the southeast corner being leveled to the exits out of the other parts of the gymnasium and the multipurpose room. At some point, it was determined, I think it was when the wall got blown further back, was some, something came up where the stairway had to be installed, which changed the whole configuration of how you get in and out of the building. And it is a problem. So at the time when it was first designed, I don't think that getting on the roof was an issue because it was so high up. But now it's within seven or eight feet, which is easily climbable, because the railing is right there to step on to get up. Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a bad situation. It needs to be corrected. And I'm not sure what, what the answer is, but I'm just not going to stop pursuing it until we get satisfaction.
Thank you.
Counselor Minor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just as Keith alluded to, originally that design called for a straight walkout from the gymnasium with a retaining wall. So that would have been a non-issue on the original design. Unfortunately, with value engineering, that was a cost that was deducted early on in the project, and this stair system was put in its place. In regards to being able to jump up on there, there was something that was brought to the committee's attention that was vetted by the architect. It's a plastic-type system that goes on top of the roof that really makes it very uncomfortable to be able to reach up to grab hold, to get up on the roof. That's something that the construction manager is costing out now, and the committee will, I believe, take action on it on our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor, are you all set?
I mean, I was just going to, basically Counselor Minor provided the information, but I just did want to reassure people that what was talked about at the last Town Hall Reno meeting, safety of people who might try to get up on the roof. We certainly don't want, we don't want to impale people on top of the Town Hall. So it will be uncomfortable, but not, not hazardous.
Okay, great, thank you. Counselor Camillo?
This is for Counselor Minor. Chris, you were the chair in the beginning of this project, and then you've been involved on and off. You have all this information. How did you let this happen? Why didn't we speak up beforehand?
In relationship to what?
Anything that's wrong with this project. We're talking about a wet basement. We've talked about generators, roof, why the building's electric and not gas heat. There's no solar on it. And now the stairs. I mean, I'm not throwing you under the bus, but it's pretty frustrating that the job's not complete and it's supposed to be. And all we do is keep finding more and more problems.
Well, I think the vast majority of the issues that you brought up, one with the generator, we still don't have an answer in terms of whether or not that meets load or not. The majority of these decisions were handled in-house by town staff and not handled by a committee level. So you can go back and review all the committee comments and all the committee meetings, all the way back. And the vast majority of these were not dealt with on a committee level. In terms of the staircase, that was something that was value engineered out. It wasn't anything that the committee said, no, we're going to go ahead and it's gone. It was something that was done before the project ever got underway as a way to try to control the cost. Everything, everything we've dealt with so far on this project has been cost-driven. With having a budget that was very, very aggressive, and everybody did their best to try to meet the building that would be a 50-year legacy building with the budget that was set.
Right. And at the same time, we knocked down a 100-year building. So
Well, the 100-year building is 70 years old, Mike.
But what I'm trying to say here is there are problems here that were visual right from the get-go. Even though that was done behind the scenes, it should have been brought to the public, especially being on committee, the building committee. That's all. Thanks, Chris.
I was on the building committee, Mike, from the beginning, for a short period. I was not on the committee during my first term on the council, and I only took the position back over in November.
And I get that, but you were there every day, and you could have pointed it out to the powers that be or whoever needed to know that they were making a mistake.
Okay.
I'm not directly, directly at you, but I am because you were there every single day.
Okay. Thank you. Any further council comment or question? All right, seeing none, we will move on now to authorize the sale of town-owned property, former Barber Road. So we had a public hearing earlier this evening on this matter. So we are able now to discuss the Town Council. We've completed the necessary reviews by the Town Plan and Zoning Commission under Connecticut General Statute 8-24. TPZ had issued a favorable report back to the council on August 25th. The required public hearing was held earlier tonight. And so now we may choose to act to complete the sale of the property this evening, and there is a resolution for our consideration. Would someone please read the resolution? And Counselor Mankey?
Sure. Result: The Newtont Town Council hereby authorizes Keith Chapman, Town Manager, to execute any and all documentation, documents necessary to complete the sale of a portion of former Barber Road to a Walk-In Medical Center LLC for a purchase price of $65,000.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Donahue. We'll open it up to discussion on this matter. Deputy Mayor Badreco?
Actually, I think my comments would be more appropriate after the resolution is passed. So I'll wait till to make a comment after the resolution is voted on.
Okay. Counselor Mankey?
I wonder if Mr. Chapman can explain that this is a piece of property that is of no, we can't access the property. Is that correct?
It's a, it's a strange piece of property. There, it's of no use to the town whatsoever. And therefore, it was viewed as a surplus property, we'll say. It's very confusing how it's been chopped up over the years. Very confusing as the ownership over the years between the state, private sector, and the town. But after a lot of due diligence by all parties involved, including, you know, our town attorney, the representative's attorney, our town clerk, James, it's been concluded that we're okay to move this forward. It's no, not going to harm the town in any way, shape, or form. It doesn't interfere with any short or long-range plans. So it was felt that, okay, this, we've done our due diligence, and this would be in the best interest of the town to rid ourselves of this property and get paid $65,000.
And just to clarify, this is, this is actually on the corner of Elagroso and Fen, sort of area, right?
James may be able to even give a better detail. James, are you listening?
I am. So about, I want to say about 100 and 110 feet to the south of Elagroso Boulevard. If you look in, coming across from Stop and Shop, you can actually see the remnants of where the road used to be. And that is specifically adjacent to the parcel owned by a Walk-In Center LLC. So this parcel would literally allow them to expand their parking lot further, far enough over, based upon the requirements of the TPZ. And that's the, that's the gist of what they're looking to purchase it for.
So Barber Road really doesn't exist any longer?
Not any longer. In the 90s, once Route 9 came through, it was cut off. It actually does exist within New Britain. And then it crosses over into the Iwo Jima Memorial. But for our side, it's dead-ended, and all we have is Fen Road now.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other council question or comment? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead to a roll call vote.
Counselor Anist?
Yes.
Counselor Badreco?
Yes.
Counselor Villo?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Mankey?
Yes.
Counselor Minor?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor Dobino?
Yes.
Eight-zero.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Badreco, did you have something to add?
Um, yes, now that this is past eight, nothing, eight, zero. To follow up on Counselor Mankey's inquiries, this piece of land, you know, really has no value to the town. There would be no developmental use, no residential use. And the price, the money that we'll get for it, you know, certainly is not a windfall, but it's an unanticipated, you know, pleasant piece of change. A few of us were, well, the idea has surfaced that perhaps this, this unexpected $65,000 due to the sale of a piece of land that basically has no value could perhaps, instead of being deposited into the general fund, could perhaps be deposited into the Land Acquisition Fund, which actually was established back in 1998, and to which our town has basically made, I think, a one-time deposit years ago of $40,000, and has remained stagnant to that time. And the Land Acquisition Fund was meant to gradually accumulate monies to be used towards the purchase for open space, not for development rights, not for, you know, anything else other than open space. And the fact that this fund has remained stagnant and unfunded for so many years, would it be possible then to take these monies that came from a basically worthless piece of land and maybe put all the funds or part of it into the Land Acquisition Fund so we can start again kind of building that up, should some valuable piece of property come available, such as parts of Cedar Mountain or whatever? Is that a possibility?
It's a great question. I don't know, Mr. Chapman, can you comment on that?
I fully support the concept. I think it's great. Certainly, I believe we can have our finance director reposition this, this $65,000 into that fund that was set up that has never been really active before. Yeah, I don't see any reason why not to, and I think it's a good start. And Gail and I have talked about this in the past. I think that having a fund for open space and opportunities when they come along would be great.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Anist?
No, I just want to support this because we have, we have had conversations regarding this. And I think moving forward, if we do sell any town-owned property that is not developed or whatever, I think it should be put into the fund as well. So this conversation is not new. It's been going on probably for about five or six years. And we finally have an opportunity where we can actually utilize this money into that land acquisition fund.
Great, agreed, thank you. Counselor Mankey?
Just, I think, Counselor Badreco, this is a great idea. I think it's, it's a sort of a place we can get some money to put into this fund without, without affecting the bottom line. Do we need a motion to do this, or do we just kind of do this by, by moving money from one fund to another fund, or how do we proceed?
I would say that I'll talk with Janet about this tomorrow, if an additional action is required. I will put it on the agenda. I don't think an additional action is required, but I'll just verify that with her.
Okay, sounds good. I think it's, I think it's a great idea. Counselor Badreco?
Great job. Thank you, everyone. That's a great idea. All right, we will move on. I don't have anybody else's hands up, so we will go on to new business. This evening, the only item under new business that we have is blighted premises update. And I believe Andrew Armstrong, our CEO officer is here, zoning enforcement officer.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
We sure can. Welcome.
Excellent. Wonderful. So yes, Andrew Armstrong here to give an update on blight enforcement this evening. You should have all had a memorandum in your packets, and I'll just run through the statistics really quick. The first vertical column that you see, August 2016 through June 2019, the significance of that is just to give some historical context. I gave my last blight update to the council in June 2019. And at that time, I presented these numbers, and that was signifying the last three years. We hadn't had a blight update, but that just gives some context to the numbers that I'm presenting now. The next vertical column is June 2019 through the present. The significance of that column was the last time that I gave a blight report. You can see, since that time, we've received 373 blight complaints, closed 287, and 86 remain open today. And the very last vertical column, January 2020 to present, shows what we've done just since January in this year of 2020. We've done a lot of work and been very proactive in cleaning up the town. You can see that we've closed almost as many just in this short year as we did in the three years prior. And moving to the current open complaints, we have three currently in the citation phase. We still have one on the blight list, which has remained on the blight list for many years. The owner of that property has not requested a reinspection as a part of the previous lawsuit. And that property remains on the blight list today. New complaints, we currently have zero waiting inspection. And since June 2019, we've remediated six properties, the town did. And that does not include human services, where they often assist people and help out with some volunteer services. So that is the report to give you some So that is the report to give you some update for what has happened with blight in 2020. Are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Councilor Manke, go ahead.
I guess I'm a little confused. So from June 2019 to present, we had 373. Are those the same 310 from January to present?
So, yes, that's correct. So I apologize, it may have been a little confusing. I put this together and was trying to give a snapshot of the, since the last report and also since this year.
So we still have open, if I'm a math, we have 86 and 86 still open, the total of those two?
That's correct. Yeah. Yes, that's correct. There are 86 open. Even in June 2019 through the end of that year, we had closed, say, a majority of them. But just due to the nature of the data, 86 remain open because that's how many are open today.
So there's not 172 that are open, just 86?
Correct.
Okay. I think probably in the future, the report, if we could get it by fiscal year or calendar year, it would be easier to understand and see a trend because it's hard for me to tell what is from June 19th to January 2020 and what's from present to present. It seems confusing here.
Right, right, okay, I apologize.
Okay. And just because this is our report, can you just kind of go through the process of reporting blight again for us, for the public that may be listening?
Sure. Well, in the past, and today, we still take blight complaints from anonymous people. Or you can leave your information if you prefer. When we receive the complaint, I go out and I inspect. I go out and I knock on the door first. I talk with the person and try and let them know that they may not be in compliance. If that's the case, what the code is and what they need to do. I'll work with them on a plan for compliance and something reasonable, but the goal is ultimately to get them to comply. People who have extenuating circumstances can be referred to human services and we have resources there that can often help people. So we're always looking to help people. We're always looking to work with people. But the goal is to get the town clean. And as well as I do proactive blight runs through the town to, I've been instructed to put some more time into blight. And so I've made that a priority.
If I may just intercede or interject here, the, when I first arrived back in January of this year, the conditions in the field, looking at street by street as I did, I found an excessive amount of blight. And I've asked Andrew to step it up and get these blight issues cleaned up. Now, some of those that he's working with are very challenging. He has done well with a portion of what I've submitted for complaints as well as what's come in from others. But we need to continue to beef this up and be more proactive. It really adversely impacts on economic development efforts. And with residential homes, if you have one house that's a mess, the whole neighborhood gets brought down. So I don't believe the effort made in the past was as significant as what we're trying to do now. It was not part of Andrew's direction from the previous administration to be proactive. He was more reactive. And it's come back to blight us a little bit. But we're going to continue to work on beefing up the operation and get more done more efficiently and eliminate as much blight as possible, recognizing that some of what Andrew's working with is is very difficult because of property owners' resistance and so forth. And, you know, what has been allowed to occur over the years in certain areas just should never have been allowed. And that goes back well before Andrew ever got here. So it's a new focus that we have and I've made it a priority for our administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Deputy Mayor Boudreco?
Yes, I have actually two questions. And again, I'm sorry, Andrew, I must be mathematically challenged here, but I'm still confused on the way the chart reads to me is June 19th to the present, you received 373 complaints. That's to the present. Then January 2020 to the present, you received 310, which is not an additional, but it means that from June to January, you received 63 and the additional ones came in this year?
Yes, that's correct. I apologize for the confusion. My chart should have been presented a little bit differently, I think, because it includes from June, as you say, to present. It really should be from June to the end of the year. I just wanted to give a full picture of the numbers from my last report as well as kind of a picture of what's happened this fiscal year.
So there's been a significant increase in complaints received this year due to more comprehensive activity on your part, I guess?
That's correct.
Okay. And then just one other, I don't know whether you'd be able to address this, but from 2016 to 2019, there was only like 200, that's like three years. There was only 242 complaints received compared to, you know, the significant increase in, you know, the shorter amounts of time. Can you comment on why?
Yeah, well, like Keith said, I think that there wasn't as much of a focus on it prior. And since we've put more time into it, my job consists of other duties such as zoning enforcement and the assistant town planner position, which often take up a lot of time. So it can be challenging to deal with blight because it can be a very time-consuming job on its own. And I've put a little bit more time towards blight now in 2020 to make more progress. So that's the reasoning for the uptick in the complaints.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilor Donahue, go ahead.
Andrew, once again, I might be mathematically challenged myself. Looking at the current open complaints and it has three in citation phase and one on the blight list. But I guess, what's the difference between the 86? Those aren't, those aren't blight, those are just open?
They're open because they have not been resolved. Either they're in progress, they need a reinspection. Those all could be the case for the 86 open. And that would include the citation phase because it's still part of the process. So those three in the citation phase are also included in the 86.
So I mean, but truly the 86 are on the blight list?
No, I'm sorry. The blight list, and this, maybe I can see how this could be confusing because the actual blight list is a term that we use for when we actually have to remediate a property. You go on to the actual blight list, then you must request to be removed from the blight list. So when we say blight, you're on the blight list, there's really only one on the blight list. But we have an open blight spreadsheet of complaints that are open complaints.
So when, they only become a blight issue if the people who own the property refuse to clean it up?
And it's run the full course of the process and went to remediation. At that point, you go on to the blight list. If it's remediated, you could be removed off of it. And there's a technical term of the blight list, which is confusing because there's a blight spreadsheet and there's also a blight list of remediated properties.
I mean, that would probably be helpful to, you know, maybe break that down further. Right, because, and you know, and just carry on, the citation phase is before it goes on to the blight list?
That's correct. Yeah, the blight list is the last step in the process.
Seems like a lot of steps.
Yes, it definitely is. It's the entire process that consists of state statutes and regulations. Takes over 30 days to run the course. So there's a lot involved. There's a lot of work even before that 30-day, 30-plus day clock starts ticking. So yes, it is a lot of work.
If I may just jump in here, I have not seen this report until tonight, but I'd certainly, next time Andrew comes before the council, this report will be totally reconfigured to make it more understandable and easier to read because I'm having trouble myself understanding it too, so.
Yeah, I apologize for that. I had very short notice, only a few hours between tasks to get this in. So I did my best and I apologize for the confusion.
I was gonna say, better you than me.
Councilor Nagel, go ahead, you're next.
Yes, I actually have two separate questions to ask in regards to blight. First of all, I'd like to know how the whole process of blight and the kinds of blight and the process that you go through, how it has been affected or changed or increased or decreased the amount of blight since the COVID has kind of ruled our lives?
Yeah, well, despite COVID, I'm going door to door and wearing a mask and using all the social distancing protocols as I've been instructed to. So I work with people personally first. I knock on the door, I speak with them so that they meet me, I know who they are. If they're not home, I'll leave them a business card and I'll write on there to call me and what the issue may be so that we can discuss it. And a lot of things get worked out that way prior to actually having to go to a letter. But the people who fall through the cracks and don't, don't follow through with cleaning it up are the people that I have to re-inspect and then send a letter and continue to try and come up with a plan of compliance, whether it falls through or not. And in the most serious cases, after they've had a notice and they've been given a timeframe and a chance to appeal is when they would actually get to a citation. At that point, they can appeal the citation. They have another, I believe, 10 days after that before they actually make it on to the blight list and the property can be remediated. The ways that this has changed, which I spoke to earlier, was we used to be reactive simply for the volume of work that's involved. And it would be extremely time-consuming even on its own in the past. But this year, we've been proactive and I ride through street by street and look for blight, talk to people and try and be more proactive with it along with my zoning enforcement. So that's how it's changed.
I'd also know that there is a blight committee which I have on. We've not met since this council has started and indeed, there may not have been a reason to. Are there any changes that you would recommend that would require that committee to meet, to bring before the council? Are there any creative ways to streamline or to make more effective or more understandable the process as opposed to what you have to go through? And I realize, as you've mentioned, there are a lot of state restrictions and challenges that you have to meet.
Sure, that's a great question. I'm glad you brought that up. I can't think of anything particularly off the top of my head, but I will give that some thought. And if there's anything that I can improve, I definitely will reach out to you and make that recommendation.
Mr. Chapman, do you see any reason for the blight committee to meet at all? I'm just asking, since we're on the subject, I'm not pushing for or against.
I think that, I believe the blight committee has a role to play here. And again, I don't know what their direction to Andrew was when it was formed and what he's got for direction over the time period he's been here from the blight committee or what involvement he's had. But, you know, from what I understand, he's been limited and restricted in the past on what he could do with blight. And I have given him new direction to make this a high priority. And I would certainly support having a Zoom meeting with the blight committee if that was something that you feel, David, could help us, certainly. You know, I don't want to have the blight committee not feel that they have a role to play here.
Well, that's my point too. I don't think one should be held unless you feel there is a reason or something that needs to be discussed to bring before the council. I was in, served on the council to a reincarnation or whatever, the blight committee many years ago, which changed things in part to what has been mentioned and seems rather complicated because it has to be for various reasons over the years. So I'm a little more knowledgeable than perhaps other people have been, except within the last several years, when I, a couple of years that I haven't been on the council. So that leaves room for some discussion that you may want to have before determining one is really necessary. As I said, I don't think one is really necessary if indeed, things are working well and you feel there is a need for it. But by the same token, if you feel a discussion is needed, I wouldn't object to it. I don't think other members of that committee would.
I think that what we'll do is, once we get further into this, yeah, I will be asking for the blight committee to come together and review the new procedures that we may be instituting and to streamline whatever we can because it shouldn't be that cumbersome. It should be worked very smoothly, but it hasn't. And I'm not sure what at this point is causing the problems. But yeah, I think the committee should come together and I'll work with you to schedule that, sure.
I know there are members of the committee, I don't know who they happen to be at the moment as well. It might help to clear up the disparities. And as you said, the misunderstandings and how things may have developed in a way that they shouldn't have or could. Like we have other committees where that seems to have happened as well that I know you're concerned about clarifying, streamlining and making them more efficient for everybody, including the populace in this town. Thanks, Keith.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Manke, go ahead.
You just have one observation. I've noticed just driving around town that I think one of the biggest offenders, and I'm not sure this is a blight or not, but it's folks who take stuff out of their houses, be it couches or TVs or whatever. They lay it on the curb and I'm assuming they don't call the town to have a pickup because usually when you do, they're that Thursday and picking it up and it's like clockwork. And I'll see it sitting on side of the people's, in front of their houses for sometimes weeks on end. Is this considered blight or is this just considered, how would we get this resolved?
Yes, I would say at a certain point, it would become blight if it's left there and you don't have an intention of having it picked up by the bulk pickup. So yeah, it's hard for me as a blight officer to know who has a bulk pickup scheduled when you're riding around town. You really can only recognize the ones that you see and you recognize. But if anybody has a blight complaint, you can always submit it electronically, online, through the Contact Us form, any town contact form. It could be forwarded to me, email or phone call to the town planning and building department.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Boudreco?
Yes, Andrew, I was just wondering if you can give us a quick, you know, subjective, objective, whatever categorization of what the top light conditions are that you're seeing in town?
I would say it's mostly I would say it's mostly debris um and some abandoned vehicles. Um, in the past, overgrown grass was a real problem that can consume days of my time. Um, this year, it it's really, really been a a lot less. I think the grass isn't growing as much or people are taking care of their lawns better and uh and banks are are taking care of foreclosed properties better because we're we're not getting as many overgrown uh grass calls as we used to. Um, but um I'm seeing a lot of debris. That's what I generally go after and um abandoned vehicles.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I don't see anyone else's hands up, so thank you very much, Andrew, for all the information.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move on now to resignations and appointments, which I believe we have a few. Uh, let's see. For appointments, uh, it looks like we have some for the Joint Shared Services Subcommittee. Who would like to do those? Counselor Mankey, go ahead. Oh, Tim, you're muted.
Okay, let me try it again. Resolved that the Newington Town Council hereby appoints the following members to the Joint Shared Services Subcommittee. Cindy Stam, BOE Representative, thirty-five, Judd Lane, Party D, Term, BOE Term. Steven Sylvia, BOE Rep., forty-five, Basswood Street, Party R, BOE Term.
There's a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Camillo. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, I'm sorry, we have to roll call, roll call vote, please, Susan.
Okay, sorry, I just muted. Yes. Rayco?
Yes.
Counselor Camillo?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Mankey?
Yes.
Counselor Minor?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
You know.
Yes.
Eight zero.
I'm here now, Sharon Braverman, I'm here. I vote yes.
Wonderful, thank you, Sharon. So motion passes nine zero, wonderful. Uh, it looks like we have two, three resignations to accept. Counselor Mankey?
Resolved, the Newington Town Council hereby accepts the resignation of Mark Sims from the Environmental Equality Commission as an industry member in accordance with an email correspondence received but received by the town clerk dated August thirty-first, twenty twenty.
There a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Counselor Nagel, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Anist?
Yes.
Counselor Braverman?
Yes.
Counselor Badraco?
Yes.
Counselor Camillo?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Mankey?
Yes.
Counselor Minor?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor Dobiano?
Yes. Wonderful, nine zero. We'll move on to the next next resignation from Economic Development Commission. Counselor Mankey?
Resolved, the Newington Town Council hereby accepts the resignation of Mark Sims for the Economic Development Commission as a member in accordance with an email correspondence received by the town clerk dated August thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Braverman. Any discussion on this one? Seeing none, all those, I'm sorry, I keep going back to old habits. We'll go to a roll call, please.
Counselor Anist?
Yes.
Counselor Braverman?
Yes.
Counselor Badraco?
Yes.
Counselor Camillo?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Mankey?
Yes.
Counselor Minor?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor Dobiano?
Yes.
Nine zero.
Thank you, and we'll move on to our next resignation from the Newington Housing Authority. Go ahead, Counselor Mankey.
Resolved that the Newington Town Council hereby accepts the resignation of Kenneth Langiel from the Newington Housing Authority as a member in accordance with an email correspondence received by the town clerk dated September third, twenty twenty.
There a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Anist. Any discussion? Seeing none, we can move to a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Anist?
Yes.
Counselor Braverman?
Yes.
Counselor Badraco?
Yes.
Counselor Camillo?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Mankey?
Yes.
Counselor Minor?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor Dobiano?
Yes. Wonderful, thank you. All right, I think we're all set with that. No other resignations or appointments, correct?
Correct.
All right, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is tax refunds and approval of tax of September eighth, twenty twenty refunds for overpayment of taxes. Deputy Mayor Badraco, if you would.
Resolved that the Newington Town Council hereby accept, whoops. Resolve that property tax refund in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred, seventy-nine dollars and ninety-four cents are hereby approved in the individual amounts and for those named on the requests for refund of an overpayment of taxes certified by the revenue collector, a list of which is attached to this resolution.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Braverman. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Anist?
Yes.
Counselor Braverman?
Yes.
Counselor Badraco?
Yes.
Counselor Camillo?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Mankey?
Yes.
Counselor Minor?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor Dobiano?
Yes.
Nine zero.
Thank you, Susan. We will move on to the next item, which is minutes of previous meetings. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes of August twenty-fifth, public hearing minutes of August twenty-seventh, and special meeting minutes of August twenty-seventh, all of twenty twenty.
So moved. Okay.
So so moved by Counselor Mankey and seconded by Counselor Camillo. Any discussion on the minutes or corrections or additions? Counselor Anist?
Yes, I was not in attendance at the August twenty-fifth meeting. I therefore would not be voting on those minutes.
Would you like us to separate that one out?
Yes, please.
All right, so who made that motion? Counselor Mankey, could you amend your motion to just be for the August twenty-fifth at this point?
I would truly do that. I would amend the twenty-fifth solely.
Ms. Counselor Camillo, will you second that?
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? So we're gonna take a roll call vote on just accepting the minutes of August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, the regular meeting.
Counselor Anist?
Stain.
Counselor Braverman?
Yes.
Counselor Badraco?
Yes.
Counselor Camillo?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Mankey?
Yes.
Counselor Minor?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor Dobiano?
Yes.
Eight, one extension.
Thank you, Susan. And now we'll entertain a motion to accept the August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty public hearing and August twenty-seven, twenty twenty special meeting minutes.
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Mankey, seconded by
Second.
Counselor Camillo? Any discussion on these? Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Anist?
Yes.
Counselor Braverman?
Yes.
Counselor Badraco?
Yes.
Counselor Camillo?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Minor?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor Dobiano?
Yes.
Nine zero.
Thank you. Boy, guys, I have to just comment on how efficient we've become with our voting. In the beginning, that took some time and lots of rounds back, so kudos to all of us who have gotten used to this format. All right, we will move on to written and oral communications from the town manager. Mr. Chapman, anything for us this evening?
Uh, just a few things. Um, I just want to remind you all, you have a meeting tomorrow night at five o'clock. Special meeting um on the Zoom program again. I did want to comment on the Senior Disabled Center. If you haven't been there lately, uh you might want to notice that the parking lot and sidewalks are all been replaced and a lot of that work was done by our own highway uh staff. And I give them compliments for that because uh it was in dire need of it and it was perfect timing with the center not being in operation at this time. Uh, most of the paving for this year has been completed. However, there's more coming next spring, once we get the state money uh for Loosa. So um enjoy those roads that we just paved over. And I just want to mention that Chris Schroeder will be missed by me quite a bit. He and I go way back and uh he's always been a right-hand person to me, as I think I've been to him. So his shoes will be tough to fill in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Any questions of the town manager? Uh, Deputy Mayor Badraco?
Yes, Keith, I noticed you um included your monthly report for June in in our packet. And I was just curious, you did note um say that um since you returned to Newington, you were making a priority to visit our historical buildings. Um, and at that point, you had turned the Kellogg Eddie House. I was just wondering how you're doing on that goal of yours to tour the historical properties. Um, what, if any, comments do you have or findings? And um I can't recall off the top of my head, were those included in the facility study that we um contracted with?
Uh, actually, they they are included, which is uh uh very important because my visiting of the uh buildings that I've visited so far uh would indicate that they they are in need of of uh work in many respects. So um I want to wait for the Owens report to come out to see what they find. But uh certainly, we need to get a uh a better system in place for maintaining not only those historical buildings, but all of our buildings. And I I'm hoping that this Owens report will will give us the uh basis to work from uh and uh through the CIP budget process that we're looking at now. Uh, I'm optimistic that we'll have a better program moving forward that will make sure that these buildings remain in good condition. And and uh I know just just looking at one of the buildings, I won't identify which one, but there's there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And um we need to get on it, otherwise it's just gonna get worse and worse as time goes on. So um, yes, it's important that we maintain our few historical buildings that we have. And uh they they are all all are in need of of some type of renovations.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Donahue?
Yeah, Keith, did they give any indication of when when their report's gonna be finished?
Uh, I think we're looking at maybe November. Uh, they were delayed because of COVID nineteen, but they've been moving right along now. And um I'm optimistic that uh we should get minimally a draft uh sometime in probably November uh that we can use for budgetary purposes moving forward.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Keith, I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciate the report, the the amount of information that you include for us uh is greatly appreciated because um there's so many things going on that you're working on and your staff is working on that we're not aware of without um some kind of communication. So I really enjoyed the report, so thank you for that.
I I just want to comment that uh you're blessed because many towns do not have this type of report that comes out. And this monthly report has been in existence since, I believe, probably nineteen sixty-nine or seventy, and it's been out every month and it's all recorded. And it's a historical document that uh people can go back and look at what was going on twenty, thirty years ago or more, uh which is kind of nice.
Absolutely agree, thank you. All right, we'll move on. The next item is council liaison and committee reports. Any counselors? Uh, Counselor Donahue?
Uh, just a reminder, we have a the Milton Park Building Committee meeting is Monday, the fourteenth at seven o'clock. If you guys have anything that, you know, you want me to to bring up, I you know, send me an email or something, I will I'll make sure it gets discussed.
Great, thank you. Counselor Nagel?
Uh, recently, uh, the Aging and Disabled Center Committee had uh their meeting. And many of the things we've talked about throughout the evening in relation to uh to it has been mentioned. They continue their um uh virtual programs, robo-calls, uh bringing uh food to individuals through dial-a-ride and working virtually as much as possible as they can. And also uh trying to determine how to uh best uh open the senior centers uh in a safe way, which will not be a quick way uh to make it once again a place where seniors can uh use as a center of resources. I won't go into details because a lot has been mentioned and a lot is in this very clear report, too. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Nagel. Any other council liaison or committee reports? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Next item is public participation. Uh, the public may participate, the limit is three minutes. In the Zoom application, you can join us by using the raise hand function. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand to be recognized. And we have Ms. Mazakoli, go right ahead.
Hi, Sue Mazakoli, one forty-nine, Harris Drive, Newington, Connecticut. Um, Mayor, you mentioned in another meeting that um there will be a lot of signage outside of the schools for election days, so people will know where to go vote. But it still seemed to be up in the air of where that was gonna happen at the town hall. So I was just hoping that you might be able to share with us exactly where we're gonna where we're gonna go vote at the town hall. And uh that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mazakoli. Uh, any other public participation? All right, I don't see any hands raised. So we will move on to remarks by counselors on public participation or anything in general, I believe, on our agenda, it says. Uh, Keith, do you know yet where the voting will take place in town hall, or is that room still to be determined?
Uh, I believe last I heard, it was gonna be in part of the gymnasium as well as the multipurpose room. Uh, and I can confirm that for you later this week uh and let you all know.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And yeah, we did comment on um after the primary, the need for some extra signage, um both about the safety precautions necessary to vote in person, as well as just helping people find the right location. So uh we are working on that with the Register of Voters Office. I know they're very aware of it. Any other council comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to a motion to adjourn. Who can do that for me?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Camillo, seconded by Counselor Mankey. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? We stand adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Stay well.
Bye.
Bye-bye.